Here for the night at least.
Okay, well, welcome. All right, well, we're all here, ready when you guys are in.
Oops, sorry. All right. It looks like the hour of 7:30 is upon us, so I'd like to call to order tonight's study session meeting for Tuesday, January 5th. Could I have a roll call, please, Ruth Ann?
Member Carter?
Here.
Member Demmett?
Here.
Member Patton?
Here.
Member Plasky?
Here.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Exum?
Yeah.
And President Hall?
Here. Okay. We, do we have any additions, corrections, or modifications for tonight's agenda? Okay, see, none of those. And it looks like, I don't believe we have any citizen statements, although I just heard a door opening, so I don't know if that's Lori going to... Just give me one second. Nope, no, no citizen statements for tonight, so is there a call for an exec session after tonight's current meeting? None. Then I need an approval for tonight's agenda, please.
So moved.
Sorry, roll call, please. I was just talking to Lori. She wanted to make sure she got who moved and seconded.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Demmett?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher is here, Vice President Exum?
Yeah.
And President Hall?
Yes, agenda is approved, and we move straight into our administrative reports for tonight, starting at 7.1, the COVID-19 Testing Plan and Protocols. I'll give it to Dr.
So tonight is all COVID-related and in-person learning related, so we're excited to talk about students returning back to school, but before we do that, we want to share a little more information about the testing plans and protocols. I know I was able to give you guys some overview before the break, and since that time, I've had lots more conversations with, you know, our contacts at ISBE and IDPH, and I shouldn't do that, Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health, Champaign, Urbana Public Health District. So our nurses, unfortunately, are 10-month employees, so they were not working during the, during the break, but they all since come back and they've been giving input the last couple of days. So again, this is not a final plan, but it is a really good start. I, I know you guys have seen both documents. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through the 22-page testing plan document. At the end of this presentation, I'm happy that we can, we can walk through specific questions that people might have about it, but I tried to pull out the pertinent, most relevant information and put it in this PowerPoint, and then if you had specific scenario questions, or if you had questions about the waivers or consent forms, or any of that, we can do that at the end. Does that sound good? Okay. So I am going to kind of walk through... Oh, John, you're always my reminder to say I'm not sharing. I always think I'm sharing because I can see it on my screen. All right, there we go. You guys can see that?
Yes.
Okay. Move that over there. All right. So as I've mentioned before, this, the ability for us to be able to provide this rapid antigen test opportunity is through a partnership with the Office of the Governor, the Illinois State Board of Education, and the Illinois Department of Public Health. We have developed a plan to provide antigen testing for symptomatic students and staff during the day. We've spent most of our time the last few days really thinking, talking about this, this second piece, the surveillance testing of staff, trying to work out the logistics for that, because the symptomatic piece will be a little bit easier, I mean, in terms, because that will mostly be one student or one staff member coming down to the office as they develop symptoms throughout the day. So we're going to actually do both of these. We're going to test the symptomatic people, and we're going to have some surveillance opportunities for staff at least once a week. So rapid testing will provide another layer of health and safety to our, I think, our already comprehensive return-to-in-person learning plans for both students and staff. This partnership will allow us to provide families another opportunity to facilitate in-person learning safely for those families that are interested in sending their students back to school. When we get to the third quarter update, so we're, right now, we're going to focus on testing, and then we're going to give you guys some information about where we are with numbers related to how many students want to come back, how many teachers are going to be coming back, so we're going to save that for the second presentation. So the intended outcomes of this testing, onsite testing at multiple sites is, one, you know, it'll minimize the educational time loss for our students and our staff by allowing us to really catch those active COVID-19 infectious people who, you know, may be carriers, they may be positive and be asymptomatic and walking around and not realize it. It'll expedite the return of our students to in-person learning. We'll be able to effectively kind of monitor exposures over time, and it will help us really help provide us more screening opportunities to, to, to make sure that we're keeping down our potential outbreaks. It'll also provide some peace of mind for our students, staff, and parents. As you guys know, our UEA, our Teachers Association, this has been something that they really have actively discussed with me. We've talked about it here at the board level. You know, when we could have testing available, if we could ever join the U of I saliva testing option. So this provides the district with a, a very, a very less expensive option than joining the U of I's saliva test, which again, they have not invited us into that yet. There's still a lot of logistical things, I think, that have not been worked out. So we don't have to wait for that. We have another opportunity to provide some peace of mind for our community, and it'll help us really monitor and have confidence in all of our procedures and mitigations and protocols that we put in place during in-person learning. So getting started with the By Next Now, as, as I've mentioned, the tests are being donated by the Illinois State Board of Education, which means there's no cost for the district. There's some minimal costs. If you look in the full testing plan, there's a $100 fee that we have to pay for our waiver. There's a $280 fee that we have to pay, but very minimal cost to us. We will have to pay for costs associated with the bio-waste removal and disposal, but again, based on what we're getting, those costs, you know, are very minimal in offsetting the number of testing kits that we're going to be asking for. Our current notification time for the rapid antigen test is 15 minutes compared to, you know, we've had people wait two or three days, which is generally the norm, but there have been times in our community where we've had people having to wait five, six, seven days to get a turnaround time on their tests. So that this will give us a lot more flexibility in terms of notification time and sending people to get tested, where we won't have to have people waiting. The By Next Now Rapid Test is a painful, less invasive test than some of the other nasal swabs that can be uncomfortable. We're in the process of obtaining our medical certification that allows our nurses or other healthcare professionals to administer the tests. I submitted all of that paperwork right the Monday or Tuesday before the break, and so we should be hearing something back. They said from the Illinois Department of Public Health, it's about a seven to 10-day business days window for them to approve everything and get us all of our, our clinical lab numbers and certifications and waivers. So I anticipate those coming any day. I've not received any follow-up questions or any concerns from anybody, so that is a good sign that it is under review, and I'm expecting it to be approved any day now, hopefully. The By Next Now test has a sensitivity of 98 to 99%, which means for every 100 infected individuals tested, one or two would be a false positive. So I think I mentioned this in the first time, in our first session, talking about the By Next Now. The first generation of the By Next Now tests weren't as reliable. They did have a higher false positive rate, but this second generation is much more accurate. So the high specificity combined with more frequent testing makes the By Next Now Rapid Antigen Test extremely accurate. In the full testing protocol, I didn't put that in the PowerPoint, but there is a slide about interpreting the results. There's a graph, like a table, and that document's public too, so anybody watching this can look in the, in the board folder and see that as well. So there are some very specific guidelines around when we have someone who tests negative, that we really think they're demonstrating symptoms, that we can say, you need to go and take a PCR test. So there are a couple of other kind of factors that our nurses and our other, our healthcare professionals can say, although you tested negative, we would recommend that you go get a PCR test, and those are the tests that they can get at Marketplace, or Carl, or OSF, or all the other community sites, CVS, Walgreens. So here, I'm going to stop sharing just for a second, so I can pull up my video here. I want to show you a very quick little overview on what the card looks like. I know I tried to kind of demonstrate for you guys last time, but I want you to actually see the, see how they will work. If I can get into, there we go. I'm going to share again. Am I sharing back up? So this is just a very short video that actually gives you a visual of what the cards look like, how the nasal swab works. I know I included some pictures, but I think the video does a really good job. Okay. So as you can see from the video, really pretty easy, right? You know, and more so the 15-minute wait time, you know, the nurses will, and our, and the healthcare professionals who do the testing, you know, they'll have their full PPE, we've got gowns, we have shields, we have masks, we have medical-approved gloves, they have goggles, so they kind of have the whole, whole shebang there in terms of everything that they're required to dawn for this. So basically, I'm not going to walk through this. I just wanted to kind of share, just so you could see the information again. This was what was shared in the video, and each kit comes with 40 test cards. We get the reagent, the swabs, basically everything we need. It does not have to be like some of the other. It doesn't have a cooling need or anything like that. It is something we can keep at room temperature. We'll keep these in a locked, locked, a foul cabinet we've been talking about, or some other locked cabinet to make sure they don't walk away from our buildings. And this is just another picture that demonstrates how you rotate the swab. Again, as they showed you, you don't have to go all the way up in your nasal passages, as some of the other tests. So we've got a lot of fact sheet information here that we wanted to make sure the public had the ability to look through, so those are all shared. They're in our board drive, so people can look through. If you have specific questions about the Abbott testing and the By Next Now, we're happy to take those. I can pass them on to Illinois Department of Public Health if I can't answer the questions, but we did want to make sure that the public had the opportunity to see what it looks like. You guys could see what it looks like, and just know a little bit about the testing process. So as part of our CLIA, which is the Clinical Lab Approval Waiver, we're required to do quite a few things. So we have to have a, a room and a location where we're going to perform the POC testing that every school building will have a, right now, we already have a quarantine isolation room, we kind of call it. So we'll designate a space in the building where the nurses will, will complete those tests during the school day. We're designating who will be performing those tests. There's some very specific training involved. Not in-person training, everything is, there are modules that they, they have to watch online, so not extensive training. As you can see, it doesn't require a whole lot of medical training, just more making sure that you're following the quality control pieces and administering the product and the reagents in the way that you're supposed to. I've been working with the School Based Health Center and Promise Healthcare, and they are going to sign off and be our provider for our standing order for the tests. So I'm happy to be able to partner with them. They've been a great partner through this, as we've talked about, using the School Based Health Center as our main drive-through site, so we're, we're having those conversations. We secured the PPE for our nurses. We had another box of N95 masks just dropped off today, actually. So our nurses are going to be fitted with those masks on Friday. We've been working through the disposal infectious waste materials process, and we, once we get our waiver number, then we will sign up for the reporting, the results requirement. So as I mentioned last time, we're required to report every positive test and every negative test. So basically, every card that they give us, we have to designate how, what was the result of that card. So and John, I forgot to introduce John when we first started, so John's here, a new member of our administrative team, so John has already jumped right in and is investigating. I don't know if you noticed on the cards, go back and see, there's like a little QR code. You can't really see it here, but it's a tiny little, it's almost like the barcode of identifying information for this particular card. So John is working through a quick and easy way that we can have whoever's doing the testing indicate, either through a scanner or some other way, that this card belongs to this result. So we're kind of working through that. We want to streamline the process for our nurses and healthcare professionals as much as we can. We worked with our attorneys, so we have the parental consent form, which you saw, and we posted that, and we also have a staff consent form. So we're not going to mandate that all of our staff test or go through the surveillance once a week. If they choose not to, they don't have to. But in order for us to complete an antigen test on them, we do have to have the signed consent form, and definitely we would have to have that for any students that we test. Whoops. So the testing process, I've already kind of mentioned that we are using the School Based Health Center, which everyone here knows is right off Iowa Street in Tiger Lane. It's attached to Urbana High School. So we're going to do our very best to simulate a drive-through model, very much like what happens at Marketplace Mall, or when you go get tested at Carl, you stay in your car. We went over, a team of us yesterday went over and looked at the space, and we are looking at signage, traffic flow, you know, how are we going to have? You know, we've got 140 people at the high school. How are we going to have 140 people come through? You know, half of the people on Monday, half of the people on Friday to get tested and do it in a reasonable timeframe, so teachers can get tested and then get back up to their classes and back to their students to teach. So Urbana Middle School also, 120-plus staff members, so same thing there. Gerber staff will be able to come over and go through the drive-through. We'll provide time for central office maintenance of facilities, adult ed staff who are interested in testing. And at the elementary level, we're going to, because elementaries are a lot smaller for early childhood and elementary, work out a schedule where they would be able to test onsite at their buildings. If we are able to secure additional supports, I'm, I've kind of reached out to some contacts in our community. You know, as you know, we have a, we do have a really high-level nursing team, but there, you know, it's not a huge group of people. So if we're able to secure some additional nursing support, we have floaters posted, we have a couple of part-time nursing physicians posted, so if we're able to hire people, I'd like to open maybe even a secondary site at one of the elementary schools, where then our elementary staff could drive through as well and not have to set up times at their building, but that might be a far-off way. We have, we have to get quite a bit more help for that. So what can we expect if a student or staff member tests positive? So I know we get a lot of questions about this. I just wanted to walk through for you and for the public and for our staff who might be watching, or for any of our families that are watching. So what are the five steps that you can expect? What's going to happen if you go through one of our drive-through sites, or you go to school and midway through the day, you're not feeling well, and you go down and get a test in the nurse's office, and it comes back positive? So what does that mean? So first, once a positive result is reported, public health officials will contact the person with COVID-19. We usually get involved very early as well, as, as I've shared with you in the past. We have our own contact tracing forms, so we will be as much involved in that process as we can from the very beginning. If the person is under 18 years old, the person's parent or guardian will be contacted. An investigation will be conducted, and the person with COVID-19 will be asked immediately to isolate at home. So if it is a student, we, of course, would have the student come. The parent would take the student home, and then from there, we, you know, public health would get involved, and they would make decisions about how they isolate everybody in the home as well. If they're siblings, those would all be things that we would talk about. Secondly, identification of close contacts. Public health officials will assess who's considered to be a close contact and who needs to be quarantined. We don't make those decisions. We can, we kind of make recommendations, but public health is, are the people who do that. The school or district office may be contacted to get seating arrangements and other information. Staff will also be asked to complete the district's contact tracing forms. And again, remember, close contacts are those that had close prolonged contact with an infected person within six feet or closer for 15 minutes or more. So number three, isolation criteria. So what does that mean when someone says you need to go home and isolate? So students or staff who test positive will be required to stay home until the following are met. So if they're positive and symptomatic, in order for them to be removed from isolation, they have to be fever-free for at least 24 hours without using fever-reducing medicine. Symptoms have to have improved over the last 24 hours, and at least 10 days have passed since the first symptom started. Secondly, if positive or asymptomatic, asymptomatic, so they're positive, but they have no symptoms, at least 10 days have passed since the test was collected. So one other comment on this slide from public health, they wanted me to make sure I said, so we reviewed all of this. Angie shared it with our public health contact, because they're awesome. I think maybe it's the next slide. Yes. Quarantine of close contacts. So students or staff who are under quarantine will be asked to stay home for 10 days after their last exposure to the infected person, monitor their symptoms for 14 days, and seek testing. So I know a lot of you follow the Illinois Department of Public Health, so just today, well, actually yesterday, but we received new information from public health. I'll share that here. So they did release some additional guidance, you know, make that a little bit bigger, that really discusses that whole 14 days versus 10 days. So right now, quarantine period is 10 calendar days after the close contacts' last exposure to the COVID-19 test, so I'm, okay, so I'm looking at option one. However, for adults, not for children, but for our staff, and quarantine period can be seven calendar days after the last exposure if they've had no symptoms within those seven days, and they can go and receive a a PCR test as of day seven, and if it comes back negative, then they don't have to stay in quarantine for the full 10 days. That is really fairly new, and so IDPH just released this again, and they have changed their decision tree to reflect that. So I just wanted to highlight that because I know our, a lot of people look at this information and know about these changes, so I wanted to make sure everyone knew that we knew about the changes, and we're following this information as well. I also wanted to highlight this has been something that has come up in the district, and it is something that we just wanted to say out loud for our staff who might be watching. So if, after completing 10 days in isolation, a probable COVID-19 test, case based on known exposure symptoms, has a subsequent exposure to a confirmed case, will that person need to be placed in quarantine again? So you just completed 10 days, and as soon as your 10 days are up, you either are exposed to a close contact, or you develop some symptoms. Will you have to quarantine again? And the answer is yes. And you would have to quarantine again. And then the last one of these I wanted to highlight, anything in red is new, so there was a change just recently that a doctor's note is no longer required. All of our return-to-work information had, we have been asking for a doctor's note or a release from quarantine letter from the health, health district, so IDPH has now said that we don't have to look for doctor's notes. If they have something indicating that they have been released from isolation from C U Public Health, then we will, we're, we're able to, to go with that. And then these two last points is, can our, our antigen test, test be used to release people from quarantine after day seven? And the answer is no. The only way someone can be released early from quarantine is to have a full PCR test done, not the rapid test. And then this is just confirming something we've already talked about here, that an outbreak used to be two days, and now, not two days, an outbreak used to, to consist of two cases in one building, and they changed that language and those criteria to make it five COVID-19 infections in a school indicate an outbreak. Okay, so I just wanted to kind of highlight that. I know you guys have seen the decision tree again, so we'll make these available as well. We'll actually take this information and put it on our chart, which is a little easier to read. So you can see that they've changed this asymptomatic individual and changed it from the 10-day and changed it from the 10 days to the seven days and the 14 days. But again, everyone should monitor their symptoms for 14 days before they try to exit isolation or quarantine. Angie, anything you want to add? I know you're our, you're our COVID guru in terms of dealing with it every day.
No, I think that you are, like, catching up to me, so.
Okay. Well, and anything else? Jennifer, what else to highlight?
Yeah, I was listening, and you, you know, you're spot on. I was reviewing my notes to see if I needed to insert anything, and you're good.
Perfect. So, how can people return to school? So, after they've been in their isolation, they've done their full days, what do they need to come back? So, people that have tested positive can return only after they've met all the criteria in step three. So, I'll show you those again. Remember, fever-free. They, their symptoms have improved within the last 24 hours, and at least 10 days have passed since their first symptom started. Close contacts can return after they've completed their quarantine period without developing symptoms or testing positive within those 14 days. So, this last slide just has some additional information, the consent forms and waivers, some of our FAQs, but then that full testing plan is listed here. So, in the full testing plan, we've got some scenarios listed. It includes some of the step-by-step information on what staff will do when they pull up in the drive-through. And we've rerouted the Tiger, we, we're gonna reroute Tiger Lane. So, when people pull up there, that the driver's side will be, you know, will come out and will kind of walk right up to your window, hand the person the baggie that has everything in it. They'll do everything they need to do, put it back in the bag, and hand it back out the window to our nurse or whoever's, whatever healthcare professional is doing the testing. So, questions? Let me look at my notes and make sure I got everything related to those two things. Anything anybody wants me to highlight? Or any questions you have related to? And again, we haven't figured out every single detail. So, you might have questions that I can't answer. Timeline. So, as you know, we have students, hopefully, returning. I'm pretty confident they will be, the week of January 19. And at that point, I'm hoping we have our waiver. We have kits on hand. So, if all those things kind of play out timeline-wise the way we expect them to, we would start the diagnostic option, hopefully, that week. So, if we're the symptomatic students and staff. So, again, I can't say this enough. If you wake up in the morning, you don't feel good, staff or student, you shouldn't be coming to school. But if you wake up in the morning, you feel okay, and then during the course of the day, you don't feel well, you can go down to the nurse's office and have a test. So, I'd hope all of that would be ready to go the week of the 19th. That, that's the plan. And then, staff surveillance. We're hoping that part is a bigger logistical lift in terms of just all the, all the logistics that are gonna go into us testing over 800 people every week. That part, I'd love to be able to start the next week, the week of the 26, but we'll have to wait and kind of see how all that plays out. If we can get it all done, and we have enough people, that is the timeline plan for that. So, I'll stop here and take questions. I do, I do, well, I guess I could probably just share this just and keep going and take all the questions at once. So, I know Peggy asked about vaccines in an email. Some of the rest of you might be thinking about when we might be receiving vaccines. So, essential workers, which are teachers and administrators, are in the next wave of Illinois' plan for receiving vaccines. They've already started that a little bit. So, they're already doing some information seeking, which is good. So, during the break, I received an email with, they wanted all the information of where nurses were, contact information for our nurses, because our nurses, I'm, CU Public Health will be utilizing our nurses to help with the vaccine process at some point. We don't have a lot of details about that, but they did reach out and ask us for that information, how many nurses we have, what their hours are. And then, just today, actually, I received a, a link that where I could go in and indicate how many staff members we have. So, I think public health is starting to plan how many vaccines that they will need for Champaign County schools in order to vaccinate all of the administrators and teachers and support staff within our districts. So, I submitted our numbers for the number of administrators we have, licensed staff, non-licensed staff, including the non-licensed ourselves that we know are gonna be working with us pretty frequently, bus drivers, monitors. So, anybody who would be in a close contact with a student, we submitted those numbers. So, Champaign, the public health department has a, an idea of how many staff members we have in our district to, to make sure that they have enough vaccines for the county. So, that was a good sign that, that is starting to move. I don't have any information about when or how yet, but just knowing that it is happening and conversations are being had. So, that's basically the only update I have about that. I know I've gotten a lot of questions just recently about positivity rates, and I've shared this. We've talked, here, I'll go to our elementary case numbers. So, we've talked about this a lot, that our positivity rate that we really want to be within is less than 8% or 8% or less. So, if you've been following the COVID testing positivity rates for our region, you know that there are several things that they look at at the governor's office in order for us to be out of the tier-three mitigations. So, they look at the seven-day rolling average for positivity. They look at the hospital bed numbers, and if there's been a patient increase at the hospital level. So, right now, Region 6, with, I usually look at the numbers that exclude the U of I, because we've talked about that here. If you include the U of I numbers, then, then our, the rates look a lot lower than they really are. So, if you look at the Region 6 numbers for positivity without the U of I, they've been pretty good. They've been averaging around 8%, to be honest, after the holiday, after Thanksgiving, after the, the holiday season here recently, and even the new year. I expected these numbers to be a lot higher. I'm not, I'm not wishing ill on anybody or anything, but I really did think that we'd be looking at, you know, percentages that would be like 10, 12%, but they've just not been there. I went today, this only goes through Sunday, but I, or Saturday. So, I looked for Monday and Tuesday. Monday, Tuesday, and Tuesday's averages are about the same, about 9%. Now, remember, Region 6 is everybody. So, if we look at, you know, you, if we look at the full Region 6 map, that includes a lot of those smaller rural communities that greatly impact the numbers. So, I like to pay attention more so to the Champaign County number, which is a lot lower. And if you look at the Champaign County number, we've been averaging around 7%. So, again, we haven't had students come back this week at all. We asked staff to work from home as much as possible this week. So, the only people here this week are administrators, really trying to give our community a little time to rest this week from the travel, the celebrations and things that might have happened the last two weeks over the break and the holiday season. So, we anticipate that those numbers will get even lower as we move into the next week and then the week after. So, I, I just wanted to give a little update about that. I know I've had some questions from UGA members. You guys may have received some questions from staff or even families. So, this is a great website. I know I've shared it with you guys before. But if you go to the Illinois Department of Public Health and just click on the region metrics, you can get to this map really easily. And it is really user-friendly in terms of navigating it. So, that is it for me. Questions? Comments?
I have a question, Jennifer. What if a staff member chooses not to get the vaccine?
Yeah.
Totally fine?
Yeah, it's okay. I mean, we, you know, there may be some people who want to go and do a full PCR test or some people who just won't test. But we can't mandate that they test. We can strongly encourage, but we can't.
Wait, did you say test? Sorry to interrupt. Brenda, did you mean vaccine or test?
Vaccine, vaccine.
Oh, and we can't force them to get the vaccine either.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. Also, my other question was, if they did choose to get the vaccine, will the second round be the same type as the first round? Or will it be a different type? You know what I'm saying? Because I know there's vaccines out there.
Yep. And, and I should say that we already have had some of our staff who have received the vaccine. Todd might want to share this. But our Gerber staff, because of the fact that the Cunningham students live in a congregate living situation, they were offered the vaccine the day before New Year's Eve, or it was really quick turnaround. I mean, I think they received an email like Tuesday and said, "If you want the vaccine, you can sign up tomorrow." Is that kind of how it, yep?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I think about 70% of the Gerber staff chose to be vaccinated. Is that?
Yeah, Jen, Jen Rowan was talking to me today, about 70%. There's a few that are checking with their doctors on other, you know, medical contraindications. But yeah, a very good response from that, from that staff.
Especially the day before holidays. So, the fact that they sent that email out and, and, you know, 70% of the staff came forward and said, "Yes, they wanted to take the vaccine," is encouraging, so.
Yeah, that's right.
They've had a couple mild outbreaks, as you can imagine. You know, the, the students are living really in close quarters. So, I think the peace of mind for staff there will make a big difference for the Gerber staff and the Cunningham staff, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to say, thanks for all the, thanks for all of the hard work at going out and looking for something else and not just kind of waiting on the U of I to, to come through for us, because obviously, that's not a certainty, and we all know that there's costs involved. So, thanks for, for looking for something else and finding something to at least get us going. I did wonder, and I think you may have mentioned this before, but I can't remember what the response was on how many of these tests we actually are able to get per day or per week, or how that part works.
So, I actually submitted for, I don't have our application right in front of us, but like 30,000. They told me to put in the number of tests that we would need to, to get us through now to the end of the year. And that would be testing every staff member once a week. And, you know, and then I kind of put an average of five to 10 diagnostic tests a day at each school. So, they, they won't send us that big amount all at once. They'll send us enough to get going the first couple of weeks, and then they'll continually send us more tests as we need them.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, Tori. I think, Anne, you were gonna say something.
I just had a couple case scenarios, and they may not be probable, but a couple of things popped into mind while you were speaking. One was, you said, "If you're not feeling well, don't come in." I'm thinking, like, some of the students at the U of I have thought about things like, you know, the magical thinking and things. Like, "I'm feeling crummy, but I'm gonna come into work anyway just because that way I'll get tested." You don't want anybody to do that, right? I mean, if they're feeling crummy, they should take their crumminess to their doctor somewhere. Okay. And this, the second question was about consent, because, you know, you said that both the, the staff is voluntary and the, the families, the children are voluntary. But let's say there's a scenario where a staff member or a child starts to feel crummy during the day, and they go to get tested, but they never signed the waiver. And that's not a big deal for the adult, for the staff member who, in order to get tested, would then, I'm presuming, have to sign it right there on the spot before they could get tested. But if it's a child whose parent hasn't signed, and that child is exhibiting symptoms, what are you, what, what are the plans for that?
So, right now, we already have, any parent who plans on sending their student back in the next couple of weeks, we have a consent form that they have to sign to return in person. And part of that consent is that if we call you and say, "Your child is sick, and they're just exhibiting some symptoms, you, you need to have a plan to come and pick them up." So, you know, that is just a given. And we, and I mean, on the consent form, it's very clear. If you have transportation issues or you're working, you need to have a backup plan in the event we call you and say, "You need to come and get your kid." So, if the parent came, the nurse could say, "Hey, they look like they're sick. They have some symptoms. Would you like us to test them?" And we could have the parent fill out the form right then and there. Or if the parent chose not to do the rapid test, we could say, you know, "You're welcome to take them home, but you can't bring them. We have a COVID exclusion letter." So, the nurses would give the parent that letter, which is very clear about what their next steps are. So, again, we can say, "Take them to your doctor, but you cannot bring them back to school until all these criteria have been met and, or in, and strongly suggest they go get a test." So.
I can speak to that. We've had staff members already that, just a couple, that did not want to test for whatever reason. And so, they, you know, were able to use their 10 COVID leave days under the FF-CRA Act, and they used all their days. And so, that's how they chose to, to use their time, and the days were used up, and that's how it went. And so, they stayed home, and then it was fine. So, we don't force anybody to test. And that's about all. And we won't force anybody to do the vaccine. So, I just wanted to chime in. So, we've already experienced it.
And if a parent didn't want to sign our consent form, we would say they can go home and, you know, put their child in isolation or quarantine at home, but they couldn't come back to school until they do everything that they're supposed to do to be cleared from our end.
Okay. And then, I know you had said that you're, that the CDC or was it the Illinois Department? Or maybe it's Champaign County, said that a doctor's note is not necessary anymore. But do you, are we requiring, could you remind me, are we requiring at least a letter from the public health department?
Yep. And that comes from the Illinois Department of Public Health. So, they, they, they've taken away the stipulation that you had to have a doctor's note, and that if you have a letter from them saying you've been released from isolation, then that's okay.
Okay. I just wanna, I, there was a lot there, and I want to make sure I understood you.
Oh, you're right.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
And thank you again, too, for all the hard work on this.
Jennifer, will the nurses be doing the result piece? Or is there a separate kind of lab person that'll be handling the results?
Yeah. So, as you saw in the video, we'll know within those 15 minutes if somebody is negative or positive. So, what, and I should have said this, Tori, I'm glad you brought it up. So, what we'll do is through, is through the drive-through situation, someone will drive up, they'll get tested, and then we're gonna ask them to go park in the parking lot and remain in their vehicle for the 15 minutes. And then, we have computers that we're gonna have set up. We've already identified a very specific testing email that we're gonna use. And so, staff will get an email within the 15, 30-minute window that says, "You're, you're clear, you're negative, you're good to go. Enjoy your day, have fun with your kids." Or they might get an email that says, "Sorry, you're positive." And the email will be very specific about what they need to do. So, you know, they have to contact their administrator. The administrator, they will get a sub, and it'll kind of give them some step-by-step. So, we're gonna have a clerical person. So, the nurses can just focus on testing, and the healthcare people can just focus on doing the testing. We'll have other people at the testing site to send those emails out to the staff. We have a Google form that we've already created. The nurses have been giving us input. So, staff will sign up ahead of time. They will, will, you know, they can go into the Google form the night before or whenever, you know, we'll have it open. People can go in, sign up for a time slot. So, that way, we know, like, at 7:30, we know we have this, we have 10 people that are gonna come through. So, we have everything kind of ready for them. So, we'll know that the day before, like, who's coming, how many people are gonna come through the testing site. And we can plan to make sure that we've got the number of tests and, and we've got enough people there to cover for the day.
Okay. And, gosh, what else was I gonna ask? Um, oh, I don't know.
You think of it. Say, yep. Peggy, you look like you were trying to, on you.
No, you answered all my questions. Thank you, was very thorough. The information had a time and tonight. So, thanks for putting such good thought into this important process.
Okay, no problem.
What were the hours again for the drive up?
Yeah. So um, on, I don't know that I put that on the actual slide. So on the high school days, because the high school starts at eight o'clock, not all teachers are gonna be teaching right at eight o'clock. So if you remember, our new schedule is eight o'clock is the course specific section. So like the students that are gonna be coming in in person, they can go and get the extra help. Um, so some staff will just come in and, you know, not be teaching, but then there'll be a large number who will be teaching at eight. So the high school, we're trying to set their time up. Um, if I, if I can have enough staff, that's the problem is, is to start at seven. So um, they would be able to sign up from seven to nine thirty and not nine thirty, seven to eight thirty, and we would have slots available and people sign up, they drive through. Um, hopefully they get their emails saying they're all good and they can go up into the high school and teach um, middle school. And you know, their schedule's a little different. So um, because the middle school teachers don't start until eight forty-five, um, we would have their testing start at eight o'clock. And then Wednesday for um, all of the non-teaching uh, folks, we would have it uh, be eight o'clock. We need to be out of that Tiger Lane area um, at the latest uh, ten o'clock. Um, I know the School Based Health Center, if they open up, um, they would open up around nine thirty, ten o'clock right now. It's been kind of slow there. So they've only been seeing patients in the afternoon. Uh, which will work out for us to be able to do what we're gonna do over there in the morning. Um, so yeah, so for the high school, seven to eight thirty, if I can get enough people to help at seven, that's kind of early. And then middle school is going to be eight to nine thirty.
And then your um, the random tests for the staff members, is that going to be a drive up as well, or will that be uh, in person?
Yeah, they can just come to the isolating room of the building.
Okay.
Yep. So I can go to the nurse's office during the day and say, hey, you know, I'm not feeling very well. The nurse can kind of test them right on spot.
Okay. And then that area, I'm assuming it will be all set up with the social distancing.
Absolutely. And, and our.
And all that.
Yep, the cleaning. So we can take our electro, electrostatic. Randy, how long does it take to clean an area after? It's pretty quick. So we have those sprayers that we can spray us weeks after we think somebody's been in there.
We can do a classroom in a few minutes.
Few minutes.
Yeah. And it has, it has a, depending on which uh, um, chemical we use or disinfectant we use, it has a one minute dwell time. But it says it, we're one minute dry or a ten minute dwell time. So.
And this will be.
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it'd be pretty fast because we won't be using classrooms. They'll be using the, the isolation quarantine spaces that we have set up in the buildings.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Okay. So next, we do want to give you an update on where we are with uh, numbers for third person, um, third port, third quarter in-person learning. Kim's gonna share a little bit. Angie's gonna share some staffing uh, numbers and Kim is gonna share um, some of the student numbers. I do want to kind of preface it with um, making sure everybody has sharing ability. Um, we did send out a survey, as you know, um, and I've said this here multiple times, as much as I've sent the survey out, the principal sent the survey out, we just don't get um, you know, a hundred percent turnout on those. So we had some buildings that were better than others. Kim will share that. Um, and then some buildings where, you know, very, not very few, but I'd say a third of the uh, families filled out the survey and a lot of it was phone calls. I mean, they made, they were making phone calls the last week before break. Um, principals, staff, secretaries, people were making phone calls even yesterday. So um, you know, really trying to make as many personal contacts with families who did not complete the survey. Um, so I'm gonna turn it over to Kim and let her kind of give us an update on where we are with numbers.
Okay. Can you see my screen? Okay. I've kind of switched up.
Can you make it a little bit bigger, please, Kim?
Sure. Let's see here.
Her old eyes.
And Anne, I'm sorry, I just jumped right to the next topic.
Oh, no. No, be my guest.
We're on step point two now.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Okay. So I just want to provide you with some comparisons, how our numbers looked with remote requests in the fall. And so you'll see that in the first column, in the fall, we had overall nine hundred sixty-one requests. And recently, um, for this next semester, we've received an additional. So these are new on top of that, one hundred thirty-six remote requests. Families were responsive to our recent elementary survey, but as Dr. Ivory Tatum said, uh, the most success that we've made is through phone calls that administrators and support staff have made those personal connections so that we can gauge interest for in-person. So you'll see those survey responses um, per building in that third column and then overall eight hundred sixty-seven and, and this survey was given to elementary. And then based on the feedback from our families, each school made some original projections in that fourth column where they thought we would be. And originally across the district, we anticipated a little under eleven hundred students would resume in person. Uh, we're seeing more interest than projected at UECS. They had a great response and um, have had to make some changes as a result. So when you look at UECS, they originally thought they would have um, around a hundred fifteen students, but in fact, it ended up being much more at a hundred forty-nine. So they've made some changes as a result with four classrooms having students four days a week and six classes that will have students attend two days a week. And um, special education students will be, be attending all four days. And then that next to last col- column, you'll see our confirmed numbers at this point. All of our schools have, again, have made those personal contacts and, and that's where we're at with confirmed attendance. Now, UHS, I want to point out their grades were just entered yesterday morning. So they're still making those phone calls and really touching base to make those connections of, of students that need to be in person based on failures, a significant number of failures, or they're not on track to graduate. And then we're also using Twenty First Century uh, to recover deficit skills at both UMS and UHS. So students don't, especially at the high school level, don't have to um, have a no, a whole nother semester of C E time. They can recoup the uh, skills that were deficit or make up any work that was perhaps incomplete. And then you'll see in that last column, just our overall enrollment at this time. So you can kind of make a comparison where we're at um, with our whole moment.
Questions about this part for Kim? I know a couple of you emailed us a few questions about in-person numbers. So.
Yeah, Kim, I'm sorry. Could you just explain again, you know, the fall remote and the spring remote? You said that's really an, so.
Those, the fall remote were the requests that we, we received from families. So even though we were remote, all of those requests were placed in the fall of families that said, we want to be remote for the whole semester.
Okay.
So then recently, we received new additional requests on top of that. And the due date was yesterday. We still had a couple roll in. But we received a hundred thirty-six new additional on top of those that were submitted in the fall.
Okay. And so, so theoretically, the fall remote requests and the spring remote requests and the confirmed in-person numbers should add up to the current enrollment for each school. I mean, I, I, my math isn't that quick, but that, those, that should, everyone should be accounted for in one of those three categories, right?
It should be, yes. And I know I've heard from um, a couple principals that they haven't heard, they're, they're reaching out um, like crazy, trying to um, or made home visits. I have principals making home visits too.
Hmm. Did, did these numbers surprise you in any way? Uh, you know, in terms of both the, the remote requests and the in-person requests?
You know, a little bit in some ways. Um, I mean, I, I, I think as I said, with early childhood, we, we didn't realize, but I think again, the, the personal connections, you know, with early childhood school, school, they called every family. And so that, that really makes a difference. And so I have to commend our administrators and support staff for all their hard work. But um, you know, I think sometimes, you know, things can get lost in messaging and those, that personal touch makes a difference.
Hmm. But you think that's why their numbers of confirmed in-person is so high? Because although um.
I think so. And, and especially for our youngest learners too, they um, really need to be in person. That just really makes a di- a difference to have that physical interaction um, that you can't get through a computer.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think the remote part has been really hard for the early childhood families, you know, in terms of the screen time and um, you know, they, they've done a really good job of trying to get activities to families that they can do at home. And they've had those group Zooms and different, different um, ways that they've been trying to engage the three, four and five-year-olds. So I think um, at that level, especially parents are are really looking forward to an opportunity to have students back in person. So.
So, so maybe we're gonna go on to this, but are, were, were we, were you able to accommodate everybody who wanted in-person? Cause I know we talked about that at the last meeting, that if more people request to come back in person than, you know, staff.
Yeah, about the only other thing, and we've shared this with principals just continuously with that October fifteenth deadline for immunizations. We do have some families that um, we still don't have those requirements fulfilled. So if that hasn't been taken care of by this point, we can't have students in person if they haven't um, submitted the necessary documentation for physicals and immunizations.
And we do have a couple instances, Peggy, not many, um, because as you can see in the numbers, I think there are a lot of people who are still wanting to keep their kids at home if they have the ability to do so. Um, but we have a few that we, that we know of. Again, like they're still, you know, still finalizing the class list. So we, you know, we know of a class where there were fourteen families who wanted to return and, and, and we really were trying to keep that class to about ten students. So the principal then um, you know, made contacts to a couple of the other families and said, you know, we have more people, your child has been doing a great job with remote thus far. So we really want to earmark these ten slots for the students in this class who need it the most. Um, so we've not had a lot of that. We've had just a few. I can think of another class that had twelve students. Um, and we had to reach out to a, you know, two of the families and tell them that um, we'd like them to keep their student remote. So they're not, there haven't been many. And you know, we kind of thought there would be a lot more of that. And it might turn out to be that way still here in the next few days. As Kim said, the deadline was yesterday. Um, but again, we don't want to turn away families who really need and want their students to be in person if we can't, if we can um, make it happen. So.
And then just one more question. Sorry, I'm just trying to absorb all the stuff on this grid, but the in-person projections, what were those based on? I know the confirmed in-person numbers, but what were the projections projecting?
Based on survey data, um, looking at the remote requests that we already received, um, contacting families, and then we just wanted to firm it up from there.
Gotcha. Okay.
And most of our survey data, we have seen pretty um, you know, pretty a, a real pattern and trend that about, it's been a half and half kind of. You know, about fifty percent. So I think a lot of the principals kind of looked at their population and thought at least maybe half of the people would want to come back.
Hmm.
Um, and I think right now with everything that's happening, you know, I don't know that we have every single building at fifty percent, but uh, so that's where those, that, that kind of added to those in-person projections too.
Or they maybe looked at space within the space they had, you know, for example, with Wiley, um, with the classrooms to have ten or twelve per room, you know, that they originally projected about a hundred twenty.
Got you. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, these numbers could change quite a bit and that there's still about uh, just looking at the bottom and if I'm reading the chart right, uh, nine sixty-one plus one thirty-six um, plus what, twelve ninety-eight um, only gets us to about sixty percent of the forty-one twenty-one. So you've got still about forty percent of the students to reach uh, somehow or another.
But then keeping in mind, um, you know, things look a little bit different at the secondary level where we're getting our, our students that are um, at risk of retention or um, a graduation or multiple failures or prioritizing that first.
Sure. My, my, my point is only that these numbers could be quite fluid still.
Hmm. Yeah, we still have, you're right. We still have families that we haven't been able to connect with, that we're still working on that. Like I said, especially at the high school level, um, with grades just being due yesterday, we're still making those connections to get those numbers formed out.
My, my thirty thousand foot level uh, concern uh, remains that uh, um, we've got quite a few students that are not participating in school in any form or fashion. And um, we're still doing them a great disservice by not uh, and I know you guys are working on trying to come up with ways to engage them. I'm, I'm not looking at it that way. It's just uh, from a societal viewpoint, uh, we got problems.
I agree. So before we go on to talk about staffing, oh, any other questions for Kim? Okay. So before Angie shares staffing, I wanted to share just a couple other uh, little tidbits for you guys. Um, so Cameron is gonna be sharing in lieu of my regular superintendent report. Um, he's going to share a, a few little changes that we've made to the website as, as my superintendent report today. So that'll happen towards the end. But one thing that we really, not yet Cameron. Okay. But what, what we really did want to um, really push is the, the whole idea of um, what the new expectations look like. So a lot of you guys have been in the district for a long time. So you've heard about PBIS, right? Positive Behavior and Adventures and Supports. And a lot of that, um, you know, our real, real visuals for the kids, um, you know, modeling the expectations at the building levels. They do things like expectation walkthroughs. So we put together a video um, that we're going to be, right, I have an early draft of it. Um, hopefully we'll be sending it out to families here in the next day or two, but I still want to preview it for you. Um, because we want families that, again, like you guys have mentioned, there's still some people out there that are, have a little anxiety, right? Even though we've, we've been trying to show pictures. We've been trying to show, you know, this is what it's gonna look like. I think until people can actually see it and know what it's gonna look like, they're still kind of like, I'm not quite sure if I want to do this yet. So we thought having a real push around, you know, how safe we're doing this, how we're in this together, how we, we've got a real plan and actually have a video that kind of um, shows families and shows the students what they can expect when they come back to school. So uh, we're gonna be kicking off, I'm gonna share my screen here, a new campaign called hashtag stronger together, uh, one one six. And um, this is our uh, new logo that we're gonna be, not logo, I guess it's gonna be our um, campaign model here. Um, so stronger, safer, smarter. Um, and we've got our little tiger here wearing the tiger mask. So we're gonna have these like all over the buildings. Um, right now we have it kind of in yard sign mode. We're gonna have these outside the buildings. Um, wherever we can kind of remind people of what the protocols are. So protect yourself, wash your hands, protect others, wear your mask and protect your band and keep your distance. So we're really gonna try to push with our students um, and our families, our community and our staff. Um, you know, a lot of people are coming back to the buildings for the very first time since March. Um, and that includes not just students, but teachers. So we really wanted to have some visuals to kind of um, remind people of, you know, th- this is our new normal, unfortunately. And um, until everyone's vaccinated, which is much further down the line. And um, all of you who have been following vaccinations know that even once you're vaccinated, you're still gonna have to wear a mask. And you're still gonna have to follow the same safety protocols that we're following now. So I wanted to kind of unveil this new campaign. Um, you'll see and hear a lot more about it here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and I wanted to just show a very short video. So I'm gonna move you guys over and switch sharing this screen. Okay. So you, do you guys just see an orange screen and that's it? Okay. Perfect. So here, again, I, we have to tweak this a little bit. Uh, we are going to have a voiceover. Um, giving the information in English and then we'll have uh, translations in Spanish and French that have already been done. We just have to embed those into the video. We just have to embed those into the video. So we're kind of hoping to share that out as much as we can, just so um you know, our students, our families have a better idea of what this is gonna look like. You know, like, you know, how the the lines are gonna look very different, they're, you know, they're gonna be using hand sanitizer stations throughout the building. Lots of temperature checks going on, you know, breakfast and lunch are gonna be very different than what students are used to. So we're hoping to have some visuals and and we allow all those are our kids, so you know, we were able to go out. While we had some students in person in the learning labs and take some pictures and then we had um some students come in specifically to give us some good. Um shots of what this would look like to kind of put this this video together to give families a good um, just a good semblance of like. This is what they can expect. I don't know if that'll make a big difference and we'll see some more people kind of say, yeah, I wanna, you know, try this out. And and you know, reach out to their principals and their schools and say, we wanna, we wanna come back in person, but we're hoping. Um that, you know, we're excited to see students back, um our teachers and our administrators are excited to have students back, so. Uh we just want to make sure families know that we're we're gonna do it in a as safe as we possibly can, so. So I know we've received some questions from you guys as well around staffing. Um we, so Angie's gonna give us a little update. On where we are with that. Uh we continue to get requests, as Angie's gonna share, but we feel confident that we can meet the need and make sure we have. Adults with students in the in-person settings, so Angie.
All right, she was very strategic in showing that video because uh my kids were in it. So now I won't be as stressed about uh talking. How my data is also fluid. Um so because of the American Disabilities Act, let me share my screen. Staff members can request uh to work remotely at any time. So um we're still getting requests. Um we got requests today. Let's see, actually, that might be too big, so no. Does that look good for you? That's as big as I can make it without with getting everything on one page. Is it okay?
Yep.
Okay, sorry, I hope that you can kind of see it, but I can share this data with you later if you can't see the bar graph, so and I'll speak to the numbers, so. Staff members can request to work remotely um and turn in a a doctor's note. Um anytime I can't, I can't make a deadline for that um because of the American Disabilities Act. Which is unfortunate, just because um, you know, a a a person has a BMI over thirty, that does put you more at risk. For having complications for COVID, but typically if somebody has a BMI over thirty, they've had it for a while. It just didn't develop in the last couple of weeks, or um age is a risk or several different risk factors didn't just come up. And so to get requests this late in the game is putting us um at a disadvantage. And so that's why my data is a little fluid too, um but we do have some positive solutions. To our kind of difficult situation here. So I wanted to show you the data and I wanted to show you um all of the groups of data that we have. So right now, at the dislike, if we were to group everything by the district level, at adult ed, we've had. Since, you know, our calendar year started over on July first, we've had two staff members request to work remotely. That's something that um we don't have to cover for subs, they cover that internally, they don't always have to have a sub every day. So that's something we don't necessarily have to worry about. At central office, we've had one staff member and it's actually a certified teacher. Um and that is not something that we need a sub to cover, and so at central office. Sometimes people think that, you know, that we haven't made over here, but no person is working remotely at some at central office. At um in the facilities department, actually, this should just be one. So that is a typo. Uh we just have one person working remotely, um zero subs needed uh for that. And one total staff member out. Um at Gerber, um we have four staff members. Working remotely and um out of that, four um staff members that are working remotely. Two are um teachers and the two teachers are covered by champagne or covered by uh Cunningham Children's Home. And so this number right here, this space right here, when I moved my cursor, I think I deleted it. When I moved um this column right here for staff working remotely, it's actually. The it's it's supposed to be certified staff. So right here for facilities, when I put one, we have no certified staff at this facility, so that should be zero. Sorry about that. And so um we have two certified staff at adult ed, one certified staff at central office who's working remotely. Zero certified staff in facilities working remotely, and so um zero subs are needed so far, so we need no subs. So great situation. At Kirk, at Gerber, we have two um certified subs working remotely. Champagne can't uh Cunningham Children's Home covers that um so that we don't have to worry about that, but they do have four staff out total. Which means that there's two other staff members who are not teachers that are out. So we are, it could be a secretary, it could be um a teaching assistant, it could be a lunchroom supervisor. I have all that data if you want to know, but I'm not gonna disclose that just for um. Just, just because you don't need to know that information, uh at least the the viewing audience doesn't need to know that information. For elementary, um these, these are classroom sort of, or these are certified teachers that I'm I'm sharing, so. Or certified staff, I should say. So in all of our elementary buildings, and this will include um Urbana Early Childhood in this count. We have uh fifty-eight um certified staff members who have requested to work remotely. Out of those fifty-eight people that have requested to work remotely, sixteen are classroom teachers. So the bare minimum that we need are sixteen subs, and it doesn't necessarily have to be. A substitute teacher that we have. Um right now, we have twelve substitute teachers confirmed to work for us full-time. Um in the, all of our teacher, or all of our teachers that are working remotely are zooming in with our students at the elementary level. So we can have a qualified staff member in the room, we can have a TA in the room, we can have. Somebody else who works at the school with the students, we can have a substitute teacher, we're still interviewing. And so it's, it's, we can still do this, like this can still work, um but we are still actively getting more subs, just in case people get sick. We have at the district level, I'll go ahead and break this down for separate pages, cause I know that we've had some board members asked specifically. So at the elementary level, how this breaks down, um by building for teachers working remotely. Our teachers asking to work remotely. And again, this is certified people, so it's not necessarily all classroom teachers, we have fine arts teachers. We have PE teachers, social workers, sped teachers, psychologists, speech and language. So here is the number that we're really looking at. So here's our certified staff that have asked to work remotely. Here's the people that need subs, so that's sixteen for elementary, those are the people that we're working on, are work, are looking at. And then here's the total amount of staff in the elementary, including early childhood, who have asked to be remote. And it's so it's seventy-five staff members um from elementary and early childhood who have asked to be remote. And out of those seventy-five, we need to cover sixteen um positions as a very minimum that we need to cover. Because we would like a certified person in that room in the classroom, if possible. Um for the secondary level. That's uh we've had a lot of requests from the secondary level. Um at the middle school, we've had thirteen, we've had seventeen requests. From um Urbana Middle School to work remotely. Out of those seventeen staff members, thirteen are teachers. And then uh for the high school, we've had twenty-eight requests to work remotely. And out of those twenty-eight requests, twenty-three are teachers from Urbana High School. And so the reason why it says zero subs needed, it's not because we don't need subs, it's because um based on us. Bringing back students who require um the most support, we're able to to put students in um learning centers and learning hubs. Where we can gather students um together safely and spread them out in larger areas so that we can double up. Classrooms, um so that students are able to follow their own schedule and get multiple people supporting them, you know, in a safe manner. So we don't necessarily have to have one sub per classroom. And so the administrative team at both the middle school and high school. Are working on how many people they will need, um and they likely will be able to fill that internally. We can use SRSs, we can use lunchroom supervisors, we can use ASCCP staff. Lots of different, I mean, teaching assistants, lots of different staff members are able to support the middle school and high school just by the mere. Number of staff that they have in those buildings. And so um that's what we have going on. So the elementary has been our focus, um right bef- so for the fall semester, I'll kind of be, give you the comparison. So you have an idea of what um the HR world has been um kind of like. We had about, we had about a hundred requests to work remote for the fall semester. It picked up. Kind of moving towards October, when there was a little bit of a, you know, a a push or thought that we were gonna be returning. After October sixteenth, more requests came in. We ended um first semester at about a hundred requests to work remotely. And we're currently at a hundred and fifty-four requests um to work remotely. And so now that um staff members. Are um seeing that this, that that we're returning, um we are definitely getting more requests. More doctor's notes um to not to return in person. And so um we're doing the best we can. I do think that we can, we can keep things staffed. I just wanted to share where we're at. So the classroom teachers are are the most critical not to. Say that we don't need social, I mean, I I'm the first one to say that for um, you know, our social emotional support for students. We need our counselors and social workers and psychologists and sped teachers there, um but we've had a lot of staff members requests. To work remotely, and I don't know if it's they feel like they're not as necessary, so that's what we have going on. If you have any questions, I'm happy to. To answer them. Um only two requests have been denied um because the proper paperwork has been submitted. So we are trying to be very empathetic as well.
And I know some of you had some specific questions, so we tried to anticipate what you might wanna see. So if this didn't answer your questions and you have others, like Angie said, we can get you, again, because this is a public meeting, you know, we don't wanna share. You know. Too drilled down, too much drilled down information, so we just wanted to kind of give you a, you know, bigger picture view.
This is super helpful, thank you Angie and Jennifer both and um and staff can request waivers to work remote. For their own medical reasons or maybe someone in their household, maybe they're responsible for someone who has a medical need, I I mean, is that right?
Yes, so um for example, let's say that I want, said that I was the primary caregiver. For my father who is seventy-five, um so he's more at risk for COVID. He doesn't live with me, but like I'm his primary caregiver, and then his primary caregiver wrote. A pretty compelling note talking about his, I'm I'm giving you like a real life example, so like my dad, you know, is a smoker. He's seventy-five, he would be at higher risk if the doctor was able to phrase that in a certain way um to an employer. Then it would be um hard for me to deny that letter under ADA. Even though we don't live together. If it gets to a point where um we have, I I mean, we could. Call a lot of people back and provide accommodations um in the building. That's not something that we wanted to do, it might be something that we have to do. Um we feel like we've been. Really uh fair and accommodating to our employees and we'd like to to continue to do so. But at some point, you know, we gotta do school. And so um if we need to give somebody, you know, kind of a private area. Because their BMI is over thirty, um then we can kind of give them a a secluded area with this queen. To keep them safe. Uh so that's, you know, I mean, there's some people that have some real life concerns, but but we also have. Some really committed professionals that have, that also have some concerns that have been coming to work every day. And teaching from the buildings every single day since school started. And so I am very impressed and moved by them too, so we have um, we have a lot of good things going on too.
Angie, some of the requests have been for childcare too, right? Not just medical.
Yes, so um out, well, but these are, the ones that I shared are just all medical. So the CARES Act ended um twelve thirty-one twenty twenty, we are, we made the decision. After speaking to our attorneys to extend that, we talked to UVA leadership. They are, you know, grateful that we are extending that, we don't have to do that, we are extending the the use of the COVID leave days to March thirty-first. Twenty twenty-one. Um the teachers and members of the UEA have not had to use those days because they haven't been in person. So they'll still have access to those days since we are returning to in person. Um and so that will be available. The if if um people need to use the um lack of childcare days. That is an amazing uh benefit where staff members can be off of work for up to twelve weeks. And be paid two-thirds of their salary to stay home and not work. Um two-thirds of their salary are up to two hundred dollars a day. And and be able to to care for your child. So if your child's school does not, is not open. Or if your child's, you know, daycare is closed, um a staff member does have access uh to that, to that benefit. And and that has been really um nice for some of our employees um who have struggled. You know, our single parents, um I myself have, you know, benefited from that from with my husband in a different. Position where we need a childcare as well. So um, yeah, so we are also extending that through March thirty-first.
No, I I greatly appreciate the efforts that our district is taking to accommodate the needs of our, I appreciate the. Lengths that our district is going to accommodate the needs of our staff and families who need, who need their children to come to school. I I assume. And I'm glad the numbers are relatively low of certified teachers who cannot be in the classroom at this time, who will be teaching remotely. But I assume the families of those children will know, the ones who have chosen to come in person will know. will know if their classroom teacher will not be there in person, but will only.
Yeah, so Kim's office has a letter that the, Kim, did they share those letters before break? Or are they doing that right now? We have a letter. Yeah, so before break, we let families know. And we will have, and, and as Angie said, it's fluid. So she's gotten some new requests since we sent those out before break. But yes, we agree Peggy, we thought it was very, that parents should know if their child's teacher was not going to be there in person, so.
And I think it's wonderful. My own family will benefit from this, that our ASCCP program is going to be available for, I mean, my own student, my own children need to attend school. And so they'll be returning and then we'll be able to stay until school would, you know, normally end until three, you know, three, three fifteen. At not an additional charge, which is very accommodating for our families. Because normally, you know, there, the ASCCP, you know, it is, there is a charge, a significant charge. And so to have to pay for that when kids should already normally be in school would have been a real burden on families. And so I'm very proud to say that our district is, I didn't know that that was happening. And so that was a really nice letter to receive from Sandy Dabbin and the ASCP, you know, staff, so.
I guess the only other comment I want to make is that I'm assuming as the vaccine, kind of following up on what Jennifer said earlier in the meeting. As the vaccine, vaccines roll out to our teachers, that these numbers will likely change, maybe as early as, you know, spring. That once teachers have the vaccine, they will feel safer coming in person to teach. You know, these are not fixed for the end of the semester.
Yeah, oh yeah, that would be our hope, yes. So if, at any point, if anyone says they want to come back, then we're happy to welcome them back, yes.
I'm assuming teachers would prefer to be back in person.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for, for reaching out and accommodating staff and families and students. I mean, it's just a lot of balls to juggle.
Yeah, thank you for doing so.
So I hope that families are being reasonable. Very early on in this process, we heard a lot of demands that students be with particular teachers, whether they're remote or in person. But seeing how this is actually unfolding, I'm hoping that our community is being understanding of some of the impossible situations that we're, find ourselves in. And in trying to be as cooperative as we can with, with family wishes.
John, and I'm glad you mentioned that because that was one of our, the model that we went with where even if a teacher is, you know, working from home for medical reasons, they still are able to keep their students. I mean, that was a huge ask for families, you know, not to be separated from their classroom teachers, not to be put in these little special pods and groups. You know, again, we're not quite sure how it's going to work. We, we feel like we've got a good technology plan. We, you know, we provided some training for staff before the break on how best to navigate, you know, in-person students while you have students in the Zoom at the same time. So there's going to be a learning curve and we're all going to have to figure it out together. But you're right, I think, you know, families really, really asked for the ability not to be separated from their classroom teachers. And so this particular model honors that. But everyone, and I, I'm glad you said that, everyone will have to be a little more patient and understanding and flexible because it will be very different, you know, and, and it will take a couple of days for everybody to figure it out. But, I mean, we've got tech support, we've got instructional coaches. We have a lot of good people that hopefully will be able to support our teachers who need that technology support to make this work, so. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you very, very much, everybody, for working so hard. Even over the break when you probably wanted to take a rest. I hope everybody who worked on this did get some time off over the two weeks. But this is, I think you came up with the absolute best thing anybody humanly could possibly come up with. And we're, we can't see the future, so I think this is covering as many bases as possible. I hope everybody's safe and happy. Okay, we're done with our administrative reports, so moving on, we have no policy reviews for tonight. There are no action items for tonight's agenda either, or I don't believe any study topics either. That was kind of our study topics combined in there. So is there a call for any future special executive meetings?
Nope.
See none? You said that for your superintendent's report, we're going to hand it over to Cameron if I'm not mistaken.
So normally I'd be kind of sharing some highlights. But again, I, you know, I talked a little bit about our campaign, safer, stronger, smarter, and stronger together. As part of that, we've been wanting to make sure that the information, like all of the remote learning information, all of our safety protocols. I know we have the F A Q documents. I feel like we've been putting a lot of information out to families. And our, our website in the process has made it a little harder to find things. You know, every now and then I get an email from someone saying, where's the COVID data dashboard? I can't find it. So Cameron and I spent some time over break really going through the website and, and trying to streamline it to make it more accessible, make it easier to find things. And just to, you know, make it just more organized in thinking and how we could get to some of these resources that we've been providing to families. So I'm going to turn it over to Cameron. We're not going to be long, it'll be just a, a short little show and tell walkthrough here. So you can visualize what we're going to be rolling out here.
All right, hey, everybody, happy new year, by the way. So this will probably take like five minutes. Let's see. There we go. And I'm going to share. Uh-oh. There we go. Oh, let me share my screen, hold on, it says I have to leave and come back, sorry. Yeah, won't let me share it for some reason, my computer, oh, here we go, never mind.
Okay.
There we go. Can everybody see?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not live yet, we just wanted to show you all before. But just like Dr. Aubrey Tatum just said, we kind of went through. And after a lot of people saying that they couldn't find a lot of things, we just kind of wanted to make things a lot more simple and more clean. And on the new homepage, after we, you know, get this approved and get everything running, this is what it's going to look like. So the first thing is, we have a smaller banner. We talked about how big the banner was the last time and how hard it was to see everything when you first visit the site. So now we've updated that and you can see that it's a scrolling banner, so we'll continue to add things. But the only things we have there now are the important things for in-learning and also for employment opportunities and remote learning. So anytime somebody needs something for those, they'll be there. And we changed a little bit about the quick links bar under that as well. So if you can see, one of the first things we have now is the superintendent and B O E update. What those are going to be is the update, are the updates that we've already been doing for superintendent report. But what we're going to start doing is actually embedding them in the site with the newsletter, something similar to smores, what you see there. So that people can see older, our archived posts and updates on, on the site as they show up on the site instead of having to download like a PDF. So what you'll see now, and what you'll start seeing is one page there, it'll be on backslash superintendent. And every week and after every board meeting, we'll have a small newsletter layout that they can click, it's interactive. You can click to view more, it's going to be really simple. And we're going to start sending those out straight from the website too, through email. So a lot of times if you are subscribed to something like ISU or UIUC, any groups with them, they are, a lot of times they send you emails or newsletter through your email, so you can actually view the entire thing there. So that's what parents are going to start seeing, starting this week with the update and the B O E update as well. Career opportunities, the same thing, student learning. We added a tab there just for student learning. So when you click that, you actually get a short version of in-person and remote learning. And then you also get quick links there. If you read here, you have two links to go to, and we differentiate it between in-person and remote learning. So there are going to be two different pages just for those things. Because I know a lot of people couldn't find those things. So if you go to in-person learning here. All the information that we've already given to them specifically last month about in-person is going to be here along with quick links. The first thing is you see a link to the dashboard, so they'll be able to find that. Also here is quick links to contacts. So whenever you click one of these, whenever you click it, it's going to bring up like an email template. And you can send it directly to whoever you need help from. So if you need help with Chromebook, you can click that and it'll just bring up an email. All you have to do is write it and it's going to send it directly to whoever it needs to get sent to. And everything, the same for the rest of it as well. And this is just more information about in-person learning. So for parents who actually go and view that, they'd be to, be able to see those things there. Also, if they click this link, it'll go to a drive where we're going to drop a lot of stuff that we send them about in-person learning just specifically for in-person learning. And this is the same thing here, so they'll be able to, be able to click those resources there. And this kind of mirrors the remote learning page, except again, it's just in-person learning. So the remote learning page has been up for a couple of months. This is just the in-person version of that, so they can go here and get all the resources they need. And speaking of that remote learning page, it's still the same for the most part, except with a couple of things updated. So again, the main point here was to give you two different pages that you can find very easily for in-person and remote learning. And you can access those at the top on the menu here for student learning. And when you actually hover over, it gives you those two options to go to. So they'll be able to see those things. Another piece of feedback we got was that our menu for our district was way too long, and it was, honestly. So we went and condensed that as well, so if you hover over that, it's only a couple of options. So you have Board of Education, you have Superintendent, which again, is going to be the page for the updates. And the three pages that change are the administrator page, the department page, and programs. So when you visit that, instead of it giving us a long list of every single department and program, if you click it, you'll actually be taken to a page that looks similar to other pages we have for like alumni and calendars. So it just explains below our links to the departments and each one has a link to it. So if you click it, go to Family Engagement, click it, go to bilingual program, things like that. Same thing for programs as well. You have those here, and we have the same thing for administrators. So whether you want to go to the administrative team, directors, or principals, you can go to those as well. And I'll go back to the new homepage here because we weren't done with that. And of course, schools, if you need to find schools, you can find those there as well. And then our, with our new campaign, Stronger Together, we have a block for that right under those quick links in that banner there. So this is just for safety for people returning for in-school, in-person learning. So we have the COVID testing and plan and protocol, so everything Dr. Aubrey Tatum just went over, that's available there and it's on Drive. Same thing for school plans, so they can actually click that and go to a drive with school plans in it. And it has other things there, but the main thing are the school plans. Same thing for in-person learning resources, health and safety F A Qs. So anything we send out through Skylar with the F A Qs that we designed, they'll be there as well. So they can click those and go there, and then the COVID dashboard is linked again, just in case people need to find it. The next bar we have on the homepage is resources. So I actually went through and looked at pages that are visited this time of year a lot. And I picked these six for the most part. So we have Board of Education, Human Resources, Calendars, Technology, we're going to update soon as well. And we let them know, check back here soon for Technology, Curriculum and Instruction. And we also put up an Equity one. So this will just be updates about anything with Equity Task Force and Social Justice. So right now, it's not much there, other than what we've already told them. But as we update it, we'll start to put things on that page as well. The next one is really, oh, sorry.
I was just going to add, as we get the Equity Task Force up and going, that will be where the agendas will live, meeting minutes. You know, we'll post, once we know who the committee is going to be comprised of. So people will be able to go there and, and kind of follow along with the work of the Equity Task Force group too.
And then right under that, we have registration information. I know a lot of parents last year were saying it was hard to find registration things on the page. So now that it's springtime, we want to put those right front and center on the homepage. So the three important ones that are mostly viewed are the registration, the general registration information, new family information, and then the attendance map. So now that can be accessed straight from the homepage when we view that, so it'll be easy to find as well. We do have a news link as well, so anytime we update a story or anything for superintendent update, that'll be there as well. And then at the end, we have a, a social media bar. We're going to add Twitter here, I just have to find a good plugin that, that fits there and it works well. So I'm still looking for that, but we do have a Facebook one here where you can view events and any recent posts that we have. And at the bottom is the regular footer that we've already had. So again, this will be going live this week as we continue to just polish up things and make sure it's fine. And hopefully that helps people find information a lot better, so.
Cameron, were you able to make the B O E news sample one for them yet?
I was actually working on that, like as we were talking, but I'll be able to probably just email everybody one tomorrow, just to see what it looks like.
So what we're going to start doing, very similar to the, the weekly superintendent update. After every board meeting, we'll go in and it'll, it'll kind of live in a newsletter format. And we'll give a general update on everything that we talked about through our board meetings and, and share those out as well. As Cameron said, we'll send, be able to send those out via email, like a newsletter that we'll just call it B O E News or B O E Updates.
Oh, great, and then Jennifer and, and Cameron, will then, will that newsletter link to the documents, you know, and the agenda of that meeting? Because I, that's a question people ask often. Wonderful, oh, that'll be really helpful.
Yeah, I was going to say, similar to what we do with the superintendent update, you know, anytime we, we put something in there, I try to link the PowerPoint or we link the, whatever the document was or the presentation. And so we'll do the exact same thing, list those relevant B O E documents that go along with that discussion.
Wonderful.
Questions?
Any questions, maybe suggestions, by?
Is there a search button?
Um, I have, I'm putting a search button at the bottom, actually. So I'm actually adding a third column here for student learning. I just, I was looking at that earlier and thinking that, and I'm going to put a search option right above our logo here. So people will be able to view it, because I know a lot of people have asked for it too.
Okay. Looks great, I can't wait to look at the live version, thanks for working so hard on that all done.
Is the formatting pretty similar on mobile or?
Yes, so I know viewing here, it looks really long, but on mobile, I think I only took out one block. And I want to say is the social media, oh, actually the news one too, because I just wanted to keep it short so that people that just, you know, come on the site and need to find something really quick can get to it. So those main resources, like these small blocks and everything, they are there, and they're going to be the only thing you see on mobile, so. And everything's compatible too, we checked it, so.
Other comments, suggestions? Okay. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you, Cameron and Jennifer.
All right, that is it for me for tonight.
Thank you, it looks great. Do we have any board reports for this evening? No? Okay, I know for one, there was an announcement from the ISB website about upcoming virtual learning sessions. And I know that there's one on January fourteenth that sounded kind of interesting, kind of relevant to us actually, called Adapting to Change COVID-nineteen Testing at Schools and Future Applications. And I, they're going to be talking to a couple of school districts in the state who are also doing onsite rapid testing for COVID-nineteen. So I thought I would register just to see how long they've been doing it and what kind of things they've been learning as they've been going through it. So that one sounded interesting, if anybody else wants to sign up, I think it's January fourteenth at one o'clock.
Yeah, I signed up for that too, Anne, I thought it was.
Yeah. It was perfect timing for us. That's my only report, but sorry to just jump in, if anybody else has reports they'd like to make. Okay, well then, I think we need a motion to adjourn, please.
Oh, Anne, can I say one quick thing?
Yeah, of course.
Out, I know we've talked about this as a group, but now that John is here, our, our new C I O, we, we, we are very much hoping that we can have additional board members come in person. So John is working with Jason Leggett at UPTV. So we weren't able to make that happen for this meeting. Our hope is that for the January nineteenth meeting, that we'll have all of our sound and technical difficulties worked out where some of us can be back in the boardrooms socially distanced. We may not be able to have all seven of you in there because it'll be, you know, hard with space. But for those of you who want to come back in person, we're really working on that option. So I just wanted to say that out loud, and I know that was requested before break, but John is working through those logistics, so.
Well, that's good to know, Jennifer, and maybe you and John could both let us know what number safely can meet in that room? Because I, I mean, that room maybe can be configured differently because.
Because to me, that's what, you know, I, yep. I'm sure I speak for a lot of people that only will come back if we can safely be there together all night. And so maybe you can say, we can safely accommodate, I don't know, five adults or seven, maybe all seven of us?
Well, I think we're going to have to do some different seating arrangements. You know, I don't know if you remember that first time we went in there, all the administrators sat out in the audience area at tables. So we weren't able to sit, you know, like we won't be able to all sit like Kim and Todd and Carol up at the front with you guys, which will change the TV view. So I think it is going to take some tweaking on the visuals in terms of the camera, not just the sound, but like what we can show on camera as well is part of this. I, I'll work with Randy, you know, there might be some Plexigat glass options that we could work through. We have a lot of Plexiglas kind of stands or stanchions or whatever we want to call them in the buildings that our secretaries utilize. So we might have to even do something like that, where we can put some, some, you know, physical Plexiglas dividers in some spaces too. So I don't know that I can answer that yet, Peggy. I think we're going to have to just play with the, the setup and play with what we're going to able to. One, we, we still want to be making it a visual viewing experience for the people watching too. You know, like we don't want to compromise viewing ability and not just sound, but also the viewing options too. So I think we still got some things to, to work out. But. John, I don't know if you want to add, do you want to add anything?
I think that about covers it. We can, while we're looking at the system, we can do some additional measuring. But I, I think we have a good plan and probably a backup plan. So one way or another, hopefully on the 19th, we'll be able to get back in there.
All right, Ann, sorry, I interrupted you. Go ahead.
No, not at all. No, I'm glad you said what you, I'm glad that it came up. People are asking. Okay. So all right now, do, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
Moved in second and roll call, please, Ruth Ann.
Number Carter.
Yes.
Number Demmett.
Yes.
Number Patton.
Yes.
Number Plasky.
Yes.
Number Fisher votes yes. Vice President Exum.
Yes.
And President Hall.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
And I need your signature before you leave.
Okay.
How was it, John? Oh, he's gone. I was going to say, how was your?